Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the Shelby County Board of Education's May 22nd, 2017 work session. Ms. Collins, could you please call the roll?
Board Member Jones. Board Member Orgel. Board Member Woods. Board Member Love. Board Member McCormick. Board Member Avant. Board Member Bibbs. Board Member Cornell.
Here.
Chair Caldwell.
Here.
You have seven present.
We have a quorum. Now if everybody would please stand for the pledge of allegiance and also remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
You may be seated.
And with that, we'll ask for the approval on the agenda. Are there any amendments? Seeing none, we are ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Board Member Jones. Board Member Orgel. Board Member Woods. Board Member Love. Board Member McCormick. Board Member Avant. Board Member Bibbs. Board Member Cornell. Chair Caldwell. You have eight ayes.
That motion passes. So next, we'll move to the chairman's report. And so under my report this evening, I'd like to say congratulations to all the Shelby County Schools class of 2017 graduates. I had the honor and privilege of attending Central High Schools graduation this weekend where I got to see 387 really excited students, be glad that they are moving to the next phase of their life. The families looked like they had a sigh of relief, like I did when my son graduated two years ago. So I'm sure I speak for the board when I say that we wish all our students and families good luck and all, and the students in their future endeavors and the parents as well. So next, I'd like to tell you a little bit about a great experience I had Saturday. I'd like to congratulate Principal Johnson and the Rozelle staff, students and parents as they reached a tremendous milestone of educating students for 100 years. I believe Principal Johnson is here today, so I'd ask you to please just stand so I can acknowledge you and then I'm gonna learn from you and make sure I acknowledge everybody else that was there. It was a great, great event and we thank you for doing that. And so, so I just wanted to tell you that Rozelle is a school that's rich in history. It was founded in 1917 and in 1961, one of four elementary schools to be integrated. Four of the Memphis 13 were enrolled at Rozelle. This weekend, attending the Rozelle All-White Fair Centennial Celebration, we were treated to performances by a soloist from the Rozelle Showstoppers Chorus, Ms. Paris Elizabeth Kaiser, a brief stroll through Rozelle's history by Rozelle Drama Troop, a classic boy band tribute as Just the Fellas, and the Sounds of the Stax Academy Alumni Band. I'd like to recognize Ms. Tavita Dumas for her spearheading the celebration, Ms. Wornett for the wonderful art installation, and Ms. Marilyn Brown who is the Nutritional Services Manager, Andre Hayes who is the plant manager, for their work in making Saturday's event a great success. I also would like to include Mr. Fully Love who's the president of the Neighborhood Association I got to meet, and Mr. Bailey who is, I would call, one of the historians and was actually there when they made it, you know, they got with the school board and they made it into a performing arts and, you know, visual arts elementary school. It's an optional school, so I'll add to what Mr. Johnson said that day, for parents that are looking for kids that, who have kids that excel in the arts, this is a wonderful opportunity for them. Also, I'd like to thank the weather because it cooperated quite a bit. And basically, if you missed the centennial celebration, you missed a real treat and an opportunity to see just how much talent we have in our schools. I also like to encourage everyone to go by the University of Memphis and the Folgum Art Center, as works from Ms. Wornett's talented artists will be on display. I will say that they were accolades from Mayor Strickland and from the county and, you know, the fire department, the police department, and we actually had an officer dance a little bit. She was very well received and all I can say is they were very fortunate not to see me up there stumbling around. But with that, I just think it's a great example of a wonderful school, wonderful elementary school that's supported by its neighborhood, has a wonderful principal and teachers, and I almost forgot to acknowledge Mrs. Tanya Burton, whose kids I coached in basketball, who's also just, I think, a perfect example of the warm, loving, bright, smiling faces that the kids get to see when they go to that school. So congratulations, Mr. Johnson, on the wonderful work you've done there and wish you much success going forward. So if I haven't taken all my time, I'd ask other board members if they have some comments they'd like to make, and I'd like to acknowledge that Board Member Avant has arrived. Okay, so I understand that Ms. Bibbs is first slide. Board Member Bibbs?
Thank you Chair, for allowing me to take some of your time. I wanted to not miss this opportunity to talk about the Shelby County Schools Alumni Hall of Fame Gala. I just wanted to thank Superintendent for bringing it back this year, probably to my urging and a lot of pushing, but thank you for listening and I'm super excited that on Friday evening, we'll be celebrating five inductees into the Shelby County Schools Alumni Hall of Fame. And those people are James Alexander from the Barquays, who's a Booker T. Washington High School graduate, Larry Dobson of the Barquays, who's a Carver High School graduate, Mr. Kealan Lawson from the University of Memphis, who's a Hamilton High School graduate, Johnny Turner, Ms. Johnny Turner, who happens to be a state representative from Manassas High School, and Shup Woburn from, who's a community activist in the Frazier Community but has also served in several offices throughout the county, who also happens to be a Hamilton High School graduate. Now, I can't say I was, had anything to do with picking the people, but I, hey, because I represent Hamilton High School, can't help but to say, way to go District 7, excited to be celebrating them Friday night. This event will be happening at the Hilton. Our reception is 5:30 to 6:30. The event actually starts at 6:30 PM. And if you have not already received tickets, we actually, I think, today hit our sellout point, but hey, I may be able to work something out for you. Looking forward to seeing everyone Friday night.
Next, I see Board Member Avant's lights on.
I just wanted to echo Chair your thoughts about Rozelle. I am, my daughter is a proud graduate of Rozelle Elementary and I too could only attest to the great work that they do under the leadership of Mr. Johnson. It is, it was how we became to be a part of Shelby County Schools was our choice about the opportunities that Rozelle presented. So our motto is, we died and went to Rozelle. Yes, we love our school. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for all your hard work.
And I'd also be remiss, there was so much interest in the school, the former principals, two of them showed up, Ms. Dylan Hunt and Ms. Carter, and we couldn't find, Eddie Jones was there from the county commission, and we, but the principal, whoever kept him in the office and disciplined him, unfortunately didn't make it there. But anyway, so I'll move on and I think this next step is, oh, excuse me. Board Member Love?
Yes, I do want to acknowledge that on Friday, I attended a performance at Riverview Elementary under the Watoto Arts Program. And they also did a performance for Mrs. Ruby Bridges, I believe, on Saturday at the National Civil Rights Museum. Mr. O'Connor had his other performing arts school from Charleston. They came and both groups were able to perform for Ruby Bridges and they've never performed together. So I want to give a big shout out to Riverview K.A.
Thank you. Seeing no more lights, I'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Want to use my report to go over May's KPIs, but also along the line with other board members that had a chance to attend, really great graduation, Germantown High School on Saturday, Manassas High School on Sunday, and will be attending Tresman's graduation tomorrow. Students very well behaved, ceremony's very special, so just glad to be a part of that. And then also, just so the board knows, we sent something out, Scholars Academy notified us yesterday that they are intending to leave the Raleigh-Egypt Middle School campus. And as the board knows, we're gonna make that an I-zone school hopefully next year. And so had a chance to speak briefly with Dr. Griffin and circle back with Ms. Phelan around how we can, how we can use both of those buildings, still keeping the one school but using both of those facilities with our new I-zone approach. So just want to let the board know that, but this, we literally found out yesterday and still trying to work through those issues. Thank you. With that, I will turn it over to Jessica Lides.
Can everybody hear me? There you go. Good afternoon, and I guess we're waiting to present for this next round of KPIs. So for this month, what you asked for was dual enrollment participation, which we're measuring for specifically our juniors and seniors, and then also the number of advanced course options that are available by school. And so these are gonna reflect both our charter and non-charter schools, and they're aligned to priorities two and four of Destination 2025. So they're about improving post-secondary readiness and also expanding our high-quality school options. With that, we'll get into our dual enrollment numbers. So we have doubled the percentage of students who are participating in dual enrollment between 2014-15 and this school year. So that's just a matter of three school years, we've doubled that proportion. One thing to note here is that this doesn't include summer school, which typically will have another 100 to 200 students involved, and that's just so you'll have an equitable comparison across the three years since we haven't done summer school yet for our current school year. Any questions on this? All right. Our next slides are about the number of advanced course options that are available by school. And what you're looking at here is showing you how many unique different types of honors courses are available. So if I only teach Algebra I honors and I have five sections, it's only gonna count as one course. So this is from a student's perspective, how many different types of honors courses could I enroll in while I'm at this school? So at the middle school level, you can see that this has a strong relationship with the number of enrollment happening at that school. So when you have middle schools with 300 students or fewer, most of them do not offer an advanced course that we can see, but when you look at the schools that are in the higher end of our enrollment with over 600 students, the majority of those are offering over 11 courses and none of them are offering zero courses. So we see that this is a pretty common theme, that when you have more enrollment, you have more teachers, you have a little more flexibility to be able to offer these kinds of courses, but they can also be a draw to bring in more enrollment to your school. So those things can relate both ways. Just looking at that a different way, a little over a third of our schools don't offer any honors courses, and you'll see the breakdown of that. Three are alternative schools, so you may not expect to see a lot of honors offerings there. Nine are charter schools, but it's important to note here, you'll see a note at the bottom, that some of our charter schools do their scheduling in a different system than the one that we use for the rest of our schools. So it's possible that some of them are actually offering honors courses and we just don't know it. So I just wanted to make sure you know that. And then we have seven traditional schools, non-charter, non-alternative schools that aren't offering anything. But the majority of our middle schools are offering at least one honors course and over one in five of them are offering at least 11. So pretty good distribution here. Any questions so far? So same visual, but at the high school level, and you'll see a pretty similar theme, that at our lower enrollment schools, you're more likely to have no or just fewer honors and other advanced options available. And at the high school level, that includes honors, that includes dual enrollment, it includes AP courses and IB courses. But then when you look at our schools where we have at least 800 students enrolled, all of those schools are offering at least one advanced option and the majority of them are offering at least 40 different options for students to be able to participate in. Similar breakdown here, of our six schools that don't offer any courses, three of those are alternative and three of those are charter, which again, may be offering some that we're just not aware of because they might be using a different scheduling system. But again, you'll see that the majority of our schools are offering at least 20 advanced options of some kind and 10 of them, you know, almost one in four are offering at least 41 different types of courses that students can take. So then just going to our district recommendations here, we do want to highlight our post-secondary institutions that we work with. There's seven listed here that are able to help us offer those dual enrollment courses. But you'll see under our second recommendation, it's not just a matter of students really wanting to take these courses, it's we have to align student demand with having the prerequisites, having the teacher qualifications, and also having grant funding because when we do work with these other institutions, often we need to be able to account for that tuition some way that we aren't budgeting for with our services in K-12. So that's a really important element and something that I think's a testament to what our advanced academics teams has done in order to increase enrollment participation over time, is to allow all of those things to align. Another thing that our advanced team is doing is they go to schools every spring semester and they review students who have qualifications to participate in some kind of honors or advanced option and make sure that those counselors know that, so that we can maximize our enrollment for any student that's eligible. And they also do a lot of professional development with teachers to build their capacity because these are often highly specialized subjects, you need a specific skill set, and so a lot of it is about having that supply and demand meet together in order to offer these. Finally, I think the last thing we would highlight is just to assist our smaller schools in finding the resources and the flexibility to be able to offer more honors courses and advanced courses because it's just a little more difficult to do when you don't have as much staff. And that's what we have for our KPIs.
I have a question from Board Member Love.
So I noticed that you stated that you're going to deploy support from the division to help identify students. So has that plan already been, I mean, has the plan already been written or of how we're going to do that?
Oh, you're saying to identify students that could enroll?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, that happens every year and I think concluded this point, we do have a few people from the advanced academics team here who could speak more to it if you'd like.
Well, I was, I'll get it later.
Yeah, but what they do is they go to all of the high schools and middle schools and identify based on grades, assessment scores, things like that, students that could be eligible for these different opportunities, and then make sure as the counselors are going through their transcripts for the next year and scheduling, that they're aligning them to those opportunities.
Okay, so we're not visiting elementary schools? And I ask this because I know we have an optional school in district, my district, and I know that even E.E. Jeter, I see, you know, that they have some programs. So are we identifying our children in elementary school and letting the parents know that, hey, there's an option here based on the scores or whatever criteria you're using to place these children?
Now, that I would need to defer, do you guys do?
Good evening. I'm Katrina Taylor from the Division of Optional Schools. Regarding your question, we do not visit elementary schools. With advanced academics, we visit high schools who are offering the advanced coursework. So that's gonna be honors dual enrollment courses. For the elementary, that's gonna more so fall under optional programs, and so that's a totally different process.
What I can do, Ms.
Okay, so, go ahead.
What I can do, Ms. Love, is have Ms. Scolar, because she does have a plan or process she uses to identify the elementary kids.
Okay.
Who would likely do well in advanced courses in middle schools.
Okay, because on page four, it has middle schools. But going back to some of our schools that are in the northern part of Shelby County, Manassas, Douglas, Tresman, Raleigh-Egypt, has anybody explored the option of maybe having some of these honor classes or advanced courses at our Tresman CTC Center? And maybe that will produce more students from around that area so they can take advantage of these advanced courses? Because I'm pretty sure that you have to have a certain number of students in order to provide the teacher, but I just fully believe we have children in the northern part of Shelby County who can, who, I mean, they can do this work. And I know that we do this based on need, but if we've never explored the option to see how many children can take advantage of it or do something different, you know, I just feel like we may be doing a disservice to some of our children.
Yes, we have met with Tresman. We've done professional development to work towards building capacity for the teachers to be able to offer rigorous coursework.
At the CTC?
Not at, I'm sorry, not at the CTC, at the high school, but with dual enrollment, all high school students have the option to take advantage of dual enrollment coursework. And so some of that might take place on the campus, but they do have the option to actually go to one of our partnering universities or colleges to take those courses.
Okay.
And another thing too, Ms. Love, we're working on exploring, because of some changes, is trying to figure out how to do some of this virtually and do online with certified teachers. There's some weird rules around that, but we think we have figured out a way to be able to use technology more because the issue becomes that there's such a close correlation between enrollment and then offerings. You know, obviously the smaller the schools, the fewer offerings, but we think there's a way where we can have a teacher centrally located and then just have kids take it online. So that's what we're working on now. And that probably will allow us to have a better reach into some of our smaller schools and maybe do it at the CTC Center.
Okay, I just think we need to, you know, explore more options for our children in the inner city.
And I think too, just, Ms. Love, just on a note, so I was in Nashville a week or so ago, so with the whole new ESA and the framework, you know, there's gonna be a focus on schools offering early secondary, or early post-secondary opportunities. So in other words, when they start scoring and reviewing schools, you know, the more opportunities kids have for, to do post-secondary work in high school, and in some instances, that also includes getting ready for military service, it also includes career and technical education. Schools are gonna be held accountable and districts are gonna be held accountable for that. So, you know, we really have been working hard to push the rigor and the number of kids in dual enrollment and also in advanced and other high-performing classes.
Superintendent. I just, Board Member Love just pointed out the memo, but I also wanted to remind the board that in addition to the deck that our team prepares, there's a more detailed memo that sort of walks through this and it has a school-by-school breakdown as well.
Next, Board Member Avant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Of the students that it states in the first, on the first page, that the dual enrollment is increased from 5% to 10%, how many students are we talking about that are the junior and seniors, to give us a idea?
Yeah, I can pull that back up for you. So in 2014-15, we had 805 students that participated during the school year, and then this year that's ending, we have 1,405 students who are participating. So enrollment overall has declined a little bit, but we're also seeing, you know, numeric increase and a percentage increase.
And for these students, I think Ms. Love made a good point about how we are starting at the elementary school level to have some of the conversation with those principals about what, some interest and where there could be some expansion for middle schools based on some of the interest levels at our elementary schools. So I think it would behoove us to have conversations with our elementary school principals as we're thinking about an expansion plan, so that it supports some of the needs or interests that many of those communities have.
We did, if I may interject, we did begin this year hosting community meetings where we did reach out and visit elementary schools, speaking with parents and families beginning in fifth grade, just so that they're aware of the advanced academics coursework offered in the middle school, so that they're seeking out those opportunities for honors courses starting as early as sixth grade. So just making sure those elementary parents know what to seek out when their child goes to middle school.
We started that this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And I think too, Ms. Avant, part of the broader strategy is, what we've found over the past few years is if we really want kids immersed in this rigorous coursework at high school, we've gotta start in middle school because they can't show up in ninth grade and not really have had the coursework to be able to be successful. So I think that's, that's part of, of the overall strategy to really push and pull in the fifth grade, make sure our middle school folks are able to immerse in the sixth grade and then we'll see those numbers continue to go up.
And Superintendent, I guess the other question I have is, under the dual enrollment participation, and we listed seven post-secondary institutions that we're working with, how that list was developed and where we are currently in those partnerships with those institutions? And the reason I ask is, as we're expanding, we're doing the TSTEM School at East, just that if this list is a still viable list of dual enrollment options, or are we continuing partnerships for the sake of continuing partnerships? I think it's important that if we're moving towards some of these critical areas, that there have to be institutions that either offer some of the courses that our students are looking towards, or if Mr. Woods would be so, you know, kind to provide over the next five years, 10 years, what are those jobs that are gonna be available and that we are making sure we're aligning any of these partnerships with where our students will be going in the next five and 10 years and where we'll be shifting, where job trends and industries will be shifting, that we aren't just participating in partnerships? And it's a great list. I just don't know that it's still relevant for where we as a district are moving or providing some of our focus.
I think that's a great question, Ms. Avant. As we, you know, revamp our CTE, you know, we talked a lot about the vision is to find four or five areas that we know jobs are now and will continue to be, and then make sure kids just aren't taking classes for the sake of taking classes, but when they finish, they have a certificate so they can go get a position. I suspect that that list will expand and some instances may contract, but I think for what we offer now, the list is valid, but I think that, you know, if we think about the future and where we want to be, there probably will be some other opportunities.
Superintendent, I think it just would be helpful for the board if we could see a list of those dual enrollment classes that we, in the dollar value that's aligned with each of those institutions, so that we could see where those are. And I just, I think for the sake of prosperity, it would be, you know, a good, we'd be doing, being good fiduciaries to know that if we're spending $1,200 for a dual enrollment class of a class that, you know, we have, they have, you know, two people graduating out of that, is that really a good use of our resources? And as we're thinking about how we're gonna be expanding our CTE program, I think those are just some of the analysis of these investments we should be making at this point.
We'll make sure we get that to you.
Yeah, I think one point of clarification on that is, there's probably some overlap with the professional certifications, but some of these dual enrollment courses are towards college credit, so you'll also see students that are planning to do a two or four-year college and trying to get a head start on those credits. So not all of them are designed to be a professional kind of VOTAC type of certification, so.
No, I do want to ask you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm back, I'm sorry. Board Member Woods?
So Superintendent, I think that the comment that was just made raises a very important issue, which is, you know, are we investing in dual enrollment for kids that are gonna go to college anyway? Or are we sounding the alarm to kids about what's possible? I think part of this work has to be about not just giving another opportunity for those who are on the right track to college anyway. And so when you start talking about looking at where we are spending, making our investments around dual enrollment, we should be looking at, are these borderline students that, first-generation college students, didn't think college was possible? That's where we're seeing the best opportunity on this investment because you're now saying we're reaching into our I-zone schools, we're reaching into our alternative education schools and saying that these kids now see college as a possibility. If they're, if the vast majority of the courses are being offered at our high-performing schools, then are we only perpetuating the situation? Are we, and so that's what, things we want to be able to measure, is saying how many kids are now going to college because of our dual enrollment programs? Or we simply just giving a head start or allowing my family to now be able to invest in a new car for my child to go to college because you just covered a year of her education? So I think those are the questions we ought to be asking, the deep dive questions. And then the last piece of that, Superintendent, is who wakes up every day thinking about dual enrollment? Typically, we hear it around a broad presentation, but, you know, I would like to see the KPIs drill down to those staff persons around dual enrollment to say that, I can point to the person that's gonna take us from, you know, 100 kids getting dual enrollment to 1,000. Who are we holding accountable for that? I know we hold a superintendent. I know we hold a superintendent accountable, but who praises we get to seeing when we hit those numbers? I just don't know if we're in the budget that we speak about dual enrollment. And so if there's something we can see also, that would be helpful.
We'll do it.
Board Member Love, second time.
Is her name Chief Griffin now? Dr. Griffin? If I can ask you a question, how does Heights Academy play into, when we talk about options, dual enrollment, other classes? Being that the principal there, he created an innovative way of keeping students who left Delano or other schools inside the Fraser community, instead of them deciding to go to Snowdon, Bellevue, Craigmont. So how does that play and what support is the district, or has the district planned on giving him as it relates to the middle school and the program that he has inside of that school?
Well, Board Member Love, we have not currently, we don't have a strategic plan yet for the dual enrollment, but I know that Mr. Barber, along with Mr. Kelly, who is the new principal at Transvent High School, have talked about a trifecta even for Lucy Elementary School. So we are hoping to get a strategic plan. Dr. Whitelaw and I actually was just talking about that, and how we can support not only Grandview, but we're looking at the whole Fraser community and how we can help Raleigh-Egypt, which is also a 612, with that same type of academy concept. So we can get that to you.
Okay, thank you, because I just want to make sure that we lose so many children from Delano Optional to other districts, because there is, there isn't a, what people call a high-quality option, that offer optional programs for our middle school children in the Fraser community. And Craigmont Middle is the only one for the Raleigh community. So, you know, just making sure that we cover all the districts.
That's all the questions. Oh, I'm sorry, Board Member Cornell, that's right, I turned your light off.
I think that, see, Tennessee Promise is just for high school graduates. And what's interesting is, is that you take, for example, foreign language. If someone takes a foreign language in high school, then that can be used for high school graduation, depending upon the diploma, and it can be used for college entrance, depending upon the college. And then it can, and then they have to retake a foreign language, depending upon the degree in college that they have. What's interesting is, is that if a student took a college course in high school, it could be used for high school graduation, college entrance, and college graduation. So the state should have an interest in getting as many high school students into the community, to your institution, and get their language requirement, because not only does it save, not only is that a class we're not providing for, but that's another, some number of classes they're not providing for again later. In other words, if you have a foreign language to get in, you still may have to take a foreign language to graduate. So that's going to be four years, when if they go to dual, they can just do two years. So that cuts the cost of college in half, and it switches the cost of college from taxpayers to the lottery, because, you know, possibly, of course, they don't give the lottery to high school graduates. And that's, I mean, a high school non-graduates, so that's a problem. So do y'all see any way that we can encourage the state to help us financially with the students that are going in to dual? Because the state will then know it's going to save money later. Have you, has anybody talked about that at the state? And is there anything I said that's wrong, that I didn't correct?
I don't have any knowledge of that.
Typically, the courses that have been highest in demand have been those that our former students have come back and said they've been the most challenging. So with the dual enrollment options, those have been the courses that have been sought after as far as dual enrollment options go. We could most certainly look into the possibility of including foreign language. The Dual Enrollment Advisor, Armella Smith, that will be something that she could definitely speak with a member from the state about.
See, I think that when you have a course as part of college entrance to University of Memphis or a state college, if they could take it at a community college and get college credit, that kills two birds with one stone. And I don't know why, and then the state would know it's going to save some money, and then they could cut the cost to us, possibly. Okay, well, thank you for all y'all do.
I don't see any more lights, but I'm pinch-hitting for Board Member Love. She talked about a situation, and you could just send us the information where a child may take Algebra I in eighth grade at another school, whether it be an optional school or a charter school, and then if, depending on where they live, they may have to go back and repeat that same class. And so if you would just tell us how that's handled, or if that's normal procedure?
I guess the question repeated because they didn't pass it, or?
So, Dr. Schultz has informed me, I don't have the power to allow her to speak a third time, but the board does, so I would ask y'all, is that okay with y'all? Hearing no objection.
So I've had parents who had children in eighth grade at MBA. Their children were, for some reason, you know, not allowed to come back, and they go to a traditional Shelby County school. Well, they're still required to take Algebra I, because we offer those courses in high school. And I've had parents call me to say, well, my child has already taken Algebra I in eighth grade. So, I mean, is, are the, is it able to just transfer? Or, because all the parents that I've spoken to, they said that their child had to retake a course that they've already taken, because the charter schools, you know, they do things a little differently.
If they pass the course, then the credit would transfer. They shouldn't have to retake it.
That's, okay. But, so I guess we need to make sure that we're saying that, because that's not what they're told. And they have a report cards that show that the parent, the child has passed, but they're told that it's offered in high school. So for Algebra, I mean, for a high school, you need a certain amount of credits. And that's why I said, you know, just making sure that we're all on the same page.
Because we have some kids who take it in eighth grade, too. So I guess, so we would talk about it again, that should be it.
I know you probably wish you could stand up there another 10 or 15 minutes, but we don't have any more questions, so thank you for your presentation.
And next month, just so you know, we'll do the Priority Three, KPIs around employee absenteeism, teacher absenteeism, students stopped by long-term subs, and teachers teaching out of field. So we're going to start doing previews for next time.
Okay, I think that's a great idea, thank you, so we know what's coming. With that, we'll move on to 7.1, which is an ERP system recommendation. Superintendent?
Thank you, board members. Very excited to finally have this resolved in a way where we can bring it to the board for action. The board knows when we merged. We tried to expand an ERP system that just quite frankly didn't meet the needs that we have. And so as the board recalls, we commit, the board commissioned essentially a study about, almost a year ago, we brought in a consultant that's done this with school systems many, many times, to A, figure out what requirements we needed, and then help us through the RFP process to select the right solution. And so what we're bringing to you today is really two things. The recommendation to go with Cherry Road, and there are fixed costs associated with that. And then we have consultants that will help us to make sure that this is done right. And then we have a contingency, because in talking to the board and having many, many meetings with the consultant, it was clear that we know things are going to come up. And I think board member feedback was, let's put the right amount of dollars upfront so that we can, don't have to keep going back. So I want to thank Ms. Noble, because she, I think, literally just finished the contract with the consultant. We wanted to make sure there was going to be some local participation, and they have agreed to that. So did we get a chance to upload that, Ms. Coines, the, no, just the cost? Okay, okay.
I think we've been given copies.
Okay, okay.
Board members, you should all have gotten a copy.
So I want to thank Mr. Williams, Ms. Phelan, they've been working really hard on this for a long time.
Board Member Avant?
Superintendent, can you provide some clarification about the cost, the two-year project cost, and then the post-project cost? The difference between the two? One says not to exceed 19 million, and the post-project cost says not to exceed 12, approximately 13 million.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, the two-year, the 19 million is for the first two years, which we'll spend implementing. We also wanted to show the board the cost for the 10-year cost, so the out-years from year three through year 10 is what the, that second number is.
And what would that be?
That would be the license fees and maintenance for the, for the software.
The 13 million is based on the licensure fees and what else did you say?
And maintenance.
Maintenance of the, maintenance of the system?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no more lights. Board Member Oracle?
The, this is a pretty good spend with Oracle. And I was familiar with somebody else had a similar spend, and they would actually, the ongoing fees, the licensing fee, I know it's different fees. What's the annual, the license, that's $2 million, or is that one time? The two-seven per year?
That's the fee for two years.
Two years, okay. So it's first years of, and you may ask, because you're spending a lot of money with them, but if you'll agree to go to training and do some other, I think they take, they send you off to do some training, or do they do it all here?
They doing all the work. They're not, so they'll give us training, as we'll learn the system, yes, but they, we didn't factor in any costs about additional training beyond what.
But I think if you'll do some things on their behalf, they may adjust, and we can get about it later, I can put you in touch with somebody, they might adjust your licensing fees or make some arrangements with you for doing that, and going to seminars and some other things.
I'll just say that Ms. Noble has squeezed them. I don't know if they have anything left, but I'm sure we can get with them and see if they got anything left.
Yeah, call me, I'll put you, I'll get the details for you, but, because I think they want people to advocate for them.
Okay.
And.
Absolutely.
Got you.
Seeing no more lights and waving hands, we'll move on to 7.3, the supplemental, I'm sorry, 7.2, the Shelby County Schools Textbook Adoption Career and Technical Education.
Thank you, board members. This is per statute, there's a cycle that school districts have to adopt textbooks, not necessarily purchase, but adopt, and you guys are familiar, it's a process where we have the sealed names of the teachers, and then they get together and they recommend the textbooks to adopt for the CTE.
Seeing no lights, we'll move on to 7.3, the supplemental materials from, okay, excuse me, Board Member Avant?
So Superintendent, this is different than what we have approved previous with the Advanced 3,000. This is, how is, can you specify?
This is just actually, every year, the state requires us, I guess it's every seven years, to adopt a textbook, a textbook or set of textbooks for one particular subject, and this is just the adoption for all the CTE books. So basically, teachers will get together, review all the ones, and approve one or all of them for when and if the board decides to purchase, just have approval. So this is different than the RTI support.
So is it prudent for us to make this investment if we're making a change within the CTE program? Are these books, will they still be relevant? You know, I just wonder if this purchase, this particular purchase, might need to wait until we have moved further along with the development of our CTE program?
So it's not a purchase. It's just, they go through and say, all right, if, here's a list of books that whenever you decide to purchase, that we approve. So it's not, it's not a, it's not a purchase, it's really just a requirement by state law for teachers to go through and figure out what books to put on the approved list, so when you, when you purchase. And I think to your point, I mean, there may be, you know, 30 different course offerings that the state of Tennessee offers for CTE. You know, obviously, when we redesign our program, we'll make the purchases that align with what we're doing. So this is just, it's not a purchase at all.
So the amount, well, why would we have an amount if it's not a purchase?
There's no, no amount on the 7.2?
Sorry, am I looking at the wrong one? Oh, I apologize.
No, it's all right.
I apologize.
I may have misled you, because I think I did say the name of the 7.3.
Okay, sorry.
Board Member Cornell? Pass, okay. That was actually the last light we have. So we'll move on to 7.3, supplemental materials from ZAN Edu.
7.3 and 7.4, board members, I think that you guys went over in the Academic Review Committee. They are supplemental materials for middle school and high school around the ELA work. Yeah, English Language Arts.
Seeing the lights, we'll move to 7.4, the English Language Arts Supplemental Instructional Materials.
Same thing.
Next, we'll move on to 7.5, Hufton-Mifflin-Harkort Summer Success Reading Curriculum.
Thank you, same thing. We, these are the curriculum materials for our Summer Learning Academy. I think we went over all of them in the committee. 7.5 is for the reading curriculum. Point six is the math, and point seven, I think, is the, not bad, I got that wrong. But yeah, they're, we do them one at a time. The reading curriculum, 7.5.
Seeing no lights, we'll move to 7.6, STEM and Trucks and Materials from Pearson for the Summer Academy as well.
The 7.6 is the STEM curriculum for the Summer Academy. I think Mr. Carl, Mr. Carl, one board members, for board members who were there, were excited about these materials, because, I mean, I think that you guys got to see them and fill them, and I think they're going to be able to go home, and kids can keep them even after the program, yeah.
Okay, seeing no lights, we'll move on to 7.7, and that's Knowledge Tree Instructional Materials for the Summer Academy 2017.
It's the math curriculum.
All right, and then we'll go to 7.8, which is the Dual Enrollment, Lemoine-Hollin College.
Yes, 7.8 is, actually goes along with some of the discussion we were having today. Middle College operates out of Lemoine, and this, I'm sorry, Hollis-Fife operates out of Lemoine, and this is for really an unlimited amount of dual enrollment classes for the students who attend Hollis-Fife.
Board Member Avant?
Superintendent, could you provide a list of how many of the students from Hollis-Fife are participating in the, and I know that they were going to do an overview of all of those, but it would be helpful for us to have a list of who those, how many of those students will be impacted by this particular memory and of understanding.
I think Dr. Griffin may have that information now.
So, Board Member Avant, we actually have the last four years of the enrollment at Hollis-Fife. Currently, there are 111 students. We have 20 of those students that graduated, and 97% of those students have enrolled in Lemoine-Hollin College. And so that seems to be the trend over the last three years. In 1314, we had actually 136 kids enrolled, slightly declined in 1415 to 117, in 1516, 113. And so we are two less students from last year, which brings the total to 111 kids on that campus.
And how many, you said 20% or 20 students?
Actually, we have 20 students that graduated. So when I say 20 students of the 111.
And how many of those enrolled in?
97% of those that graduated went to Lemoine-Hollin.
Thank you.
Seeing no questions or lights, sub, item seven point nine, Florida Virtual Schools Perpetual Licenses for Virtual School Courses.
Thank you, Board Members. I think we went over this too in the Academic Committee, but essentially, there are courses that we don't offer, that we are, want to offer to our students virtually. And if you could annotate that, Dr. Griffin?
Yes, currently, we want to offer thirteen new courses in our virtual school. Those courses will include Chinese, one, two, and three, middle school world history, Spanish. We want to make sure that our students have the opportunity to intervene before they actually fail and have to go to summer school. And so, this, these courses will allow us to offer supports to students who score between a fifty-five and a sixty-nine at the end of the year, and they will only have to take these additional courses for two weeks. And so, we want to make sure that we have access to all of the courses that our students need for the entire year.
Board Member Love?
No. Superintendent, so can any student request to take a class online?
Dr. Griffin?
Yes.
Cleon, where are you?
I asked Cleon also to give me some clarity around access that's available to all of our students online.
All online courses are available to every student in the district. They start in grade six and go through adults, but we do have elementary students in optional schools that through the IEP process get the opportunity to take more rigorous online courses.
Oh, really? Oh, okay, thank you.
Board Member Cornell?
What, what does it mean perpetual license?
Perpetual in that we can put as many, we own these courses and we pay a fee of five hundred dollars whenever Florida Virtual updates the content, but we can put students in these courses in perpetuity, as many students as we would like every year with the updated content for as long as we own the courses.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Woods?
Thank you, Ms. Carwell. So Superintendent, one of the questions I have for you is, or maybe Mr. Leon can help. I noticed that there, we can do PE online also, and as you can tell, that's what I've been doing, mostly my training online. So, if you guys can tell us how that's possible, we would, we would love to know that. That's my first question.
Absolutely. So, all of the online courses are taught by our certified teachers, either currently working for Shelby County Schools and a number of our retired teachers. And from, a course like PE is taught on a blended aspect, whereas you would learn the benefit of doing a push-up online, and then you would come and meet with your teacher, and that's where you would evidence that you can do those thirty push-ups.
Got you. All right, and my next question, that's a little less comical. It's, so, how do we communicate with parents, particularly if I'm taking a virtual, an online course my senior year, and let's just say I'm not tracking to, to be successful, particularly if it's a class that leads to whether or not I walk across stage or not? What type of communication is happening with the parents so there are no, you know, eleventh-hour surprises that a student did not complete all the required modules in an online course, particularly since it's independent study?
So, quite, quite a bit, actually. We have the virtual school teacher contact every parent every week, at least once a week. Parents can also create what's called a parent account, and that way, as a child completes an assignment, the parent can see that grade change in real time. We also send reports to schools bi-weekly so that schools can connect with that student who is off pace or congratulate that student that is blowing it out of the water.
Okay, and, and so, I appreciate that, and I saw Board Member Jones nodding in agreement that that actually happens. I think what would give us a, probably a little more cover, it may be happening, if there is some type of written communication or some type of email that goes out to parents, particularly when a student, I know you mentioned to congratulate them, but if a student is not on track, and what we can refer back to saying, you know, we have four communications with you throughout the year that your students were not tracking to complete this required course in order to meet graduation requirements. Typically, you know, I believe that's happening, but it's just always a tough position to be in as a board member when we're left to, to take, you know, hearing that, that debate, you know, when graduation is forty-eight hours out and the parent takes one position and the district takes another. So, if we can be able to say, you know, this communication took place and, and we can always, you know, give us a great deal of cover in those positions.
Absolutely. I can share those documents with Chief Griffin and she can forward those on to the board.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Board Member Jones, because Board Member Love couldn't make up her mind.
Okay, well, she have a little extra time. I, I just wanted to say that I am familiar with the virtual school when I was a new board member and energetic. I signed up for every graduation, every graduation that I was able to attend, and one of those was the virtual school. And after fighting off the crowds that most of them, I virtually attended, but no, you attend in person. But I was surprised when I got there, there were only three students, and I didn't know what was happening. It explained, I was, I was really introduced to the virtual concept and all the work they do, and I was impressed with everything they do to ensure that those, just those handful of kids are on track, understand what they need to do. It's very rigorous, it's not easy, and they put a lot of time and effort and work into ensuring that they know where they are, know what their obligations are. So, I wasn't familiar with it until that, but I, and I'd also commend the district for having a full graduation. There was a commencement speaker and for those three students, and they took photos and we shook hands, and, and so, I was really impressed that they were not marginalized or they got the full graduation experience, so.
Tomorrow night at Hamilton High School, if you're interested.
Is it open from three?
It's open and free, and that number has ballooned.
Oh, that's what I was.
And our ranks even include incarcerated youth.
Absolutely. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I'd just ask Board Member Jones one quick question. When you started to lose that injury, was that before or after you became chair?
Fifth to fifth.
So, next, I'll, I'm going to let Board Member Love speak, because I'm not sure when. Board Member Cornell?
I know that we have a partnership with some of our charters. I don't know if we're charging them or not, so some of their students are allowed to play on some of our sports teams. Are we allowed to have a partnership with the charters and maybe charge a certain price so their children can participate in some of these coursework, in some of this coursework?
Charter schools do currently participate in online courses. They do pay a fee for the courses. The school pays the fee, one hundred dollars per half-credit course and two hundred dollars for a full-credit course, and that gives them full access to everything that our students that are a part of the traditional district have access to.
Okay, and Superintendent, as we begin to do our registration and recruitment, I think that this needs to be, I mean, because I didn't know that y'all provided classes for six, I mean, for middle schools. I didn't even know that some optional school students can take advantage of this in the elementary school. So, if I didn't know, just imagine the many people who, you know, who also unaware of this. So, I think we need to, you know, do this, and this may be a way, I mean, that we can bring more students in, you know.
I want to say too, Ms. Love, I think that with Dr. Franklin and Mr. Leon, they did a lot of work about a year and a half ago, because what we found was that we have a lot of people enrolling and not a lot of people finishing the course. They did a lot of work around making sure that we, you know, have the supports in place and then let kids only sign up for X amount of class where they can be successful, because what would happen would be, the principal may say, we'll put you in ten schools, in ten classes, and then it, it got to be overwhelming. So, we really want to commend them for the work that they've done to say, we don't want to just offer the classes, but we want to make sure kids are going to be successful in the classes.
Board Member Cornell?
Everybody's telling their virtual school experience, and I also attended virtual schools. Whenever there was a classroom with a window, I got a virtual education.
You know, when we say talking about a topic, it's, you know, really talking about the topic, please. Board Member Woods?
So, I think you kind of hinted at it when you talked about that you're charging a fee for the charter schools. I was curious about the motivation, you know, Board Member Love indicated that she was unaware of the expansive offerings. So, I'm going to make more of a commentary, so you don't have, put you on the spot to have to answer this question. If you're not, if you're, virtual schools is not being compensated based on volume of participants, then you are not motivated to make sure everybody knows about virtual school programs. So, I guess a question for the CFO, it doesn't have to be answered today, is really taking a deep dive look at, how do we compensate the program to make sure that if, you know, what, what is our ability, what's our capacity issue? You know, if, if, you know, if we have a, if everybody decides tonight after hearing, you know, this conversation, that we're going to sign up for PE online, what's your capacity to be able to make sure that we can respond to that increase? And do you need more resources to be able to, to support that increase in population? So, if you're not getting a, a prorata compensation based on courses being taken there, and if it's a hundred bucks, you may have a challenge there. So, I would just encourage the CFO to take a look at, and Superintendent to take a look at, the compensation model around virtual schools, if it's our goal to expand it. If it's not, then the conversation is mute. But if our, if our goal is to expand the offerings, then you may want to look at, does the dollar follow the students to those particular programs? Thank you. Unless you want to respond to that, but I was trying to get you off the hook.
I'm prepared. We could comfortably handle about twenty-five thousand students per year within the existing budget. There is, virtual courses are just new, so there's still a lot of taboo that exists around a kid virtually taking a course and being successful in that course. What we're trying to do to impact that is start earlier. So, next year, for the first time, we're offering what we're calling just-for-fun classes for all elementary students, where they're learning to do things like build video games or coding and all of that. Students won't receive a grade for it, it is literally just for fun. But those courses will prepare students to understand the discipline that is required when you're in an actual online course that you are receiving credit for.
Thank you.
Seeing no more lights, we'll move to item seven ten, the Achievement Network Curriculum and Instructional Support.
Dr. Griffin?
An organization that's going to help us with our teaching and our learning, and we actually did a presentation, I'm going to let Dr. Whitelaw talk more about it, we did it in the Academic Committee meeting. Board Member Love, you had a question on which districts ANET had worked with, and Nashville is one of those districts, and I'm going to let Dr. Whitelaw talk a little bit more in detail.
Based on, good afternoon, based on the research in Nashville, they noted that seventy-five percent of the schools that they worked with actually met or achieved their formative results, not the state results, because they have not been shared yet, but definitely the formative results that they use throughout their district. I think you asked it at the committee meeting. And actually, Dr. Griffin wanted me to also share with you how they're going to be helping us with curriculum and instruction, and basically, they're going to be helping us with the scope and sequence of our curriculum map, helping us to do a gap analysis, showing us actually the areas that we need to improve, and also helping us side-by-side in building a stronger curriculum, as well as working with five of our critical focus schools, going out, helping them side-by-side in coaching with our instructional leadership teams.
Seeing no more lights, we'll move seven eleven, Porterleaf Summer Enrichment for Rising Kindergarteners.
Yeah, so, this is actually in direct response to some questions by some board members about how we can have some pre-K kids to have some summer learning as well. And so, we work with Porterleaf to provide some summer, summer learning opportunity for some pre-K kids. I think it's about four hundred rising kindergarteners from June one to June thirtieth.
Seeing no lights, item seven twelve, New Teacher Center Instructional Coaching.
This is actually a grant that we're receiving to be a part of a study for eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars related to coaching and the new standards.
Board, Board Member Avant?
Superintendent, never one to ask why we are accepting money that supports our schools, but how does this differ than the contract that we currently have with TNTP?
Dr. Griffin, Dr. Whitelaw?
Well, just a little bit first, this grant is going to be in an effort to specifically support POC coaches, and we're going to directly impact sixty POC coaches in our district, and they're actually going to be coached around standards and support of how they can build the instructional leadership teams within schools.
So, the TNTP grant supports principals and teachers and not POC? Who does that grant support or that contract support?
TNTP, they support our district leadership, so most of the time, they work with our instructional coaches that are at the district level, our literacy and math. Also, they work with our instructional leadership directors, as well as some of our content coaches in CNI. This particular grant, we want to focus on our POC coaches, because often, they are not included in a lot of our coaching, and, but yet, they're in schools working side-by-side with teachers. So, we want to make sure that we have the opportunity to have an impact on our classrooms and helping those teachers side-by-side.
So, you're aligning what, if all of those folks are working together within the schoolhouse?
Yes.
How, how is it aligned with what TNTP is providing and what this particular grant will be providing?
Actually, we met with all our partners, because we have our theory of action that Dr. Griffin has spelled out, and we're, we're being very careful in making sure that the standards that we talk about, the a-mathematical practices that we have in math, that we're also discussing them not only with TNTP, new leaders, but as well as our new C grant. So, we're being very careful in aligning the work to make sure that we're helping to change classrooms.
Thank you.
And I think, Miss Savan, if I'm correct, what they're going to do, nuts and bolts of it, is work with sixty POC coaches and then compare their data to the coaches that they don't work with and see if there's, what the difference is.
Sorry, the POC, the sixty POC coaches that you've chosen to work with, it's a range of critical schools, high achieving schools, I'm sorry, high performing schools. What's the breakdown?
Actually, the breakdown, we're going to be working with elementary and middle schools, and the new teacher representative is in the back as well, but we're, we're going to be actually highlighting sixty schools throughout the school district that are critical focus, I-zone, E-zone, and then from that sixty, we'll work with thirty, the first to the next year, work with thirty additional schools. So, the first thirty will be selected in a random way, and then the next year, we will pick up the other thirty. So, over two years, we will have impacted at least sixty schools in our district, and they'll be able to do a study to compare.
Board Member Orgul?
Dr. Griffin?
So, it not costs us anything, it's a grant.
All we have to do is to provide the, the space as well as the teachers, which are POC coaches, we're saying teachers, but POC coaches. And as a result, we'll get a printout, a study, a report of where we have fallen as far as the coaching has.
So, we're coaching our coaches?
We are. We're coaching our coaches.
Okay.
And not only are we coaching our coaches, we want a report, because we want to know how well we are doing or have done, so we want to make sure that, that we look at the results of this coaching as well as, you know, how we'll impact the teaching and learning on a daily basis.
If it works, can you see if they have one for board members? Can, and so, seven, yeah. Anyway, that's all the questions. We'll move to seven point one three, conversion of microfilm student records.
Very excited, Board Members. I think we have stu- Very excited, board members, I think we have student records downstairs from 1912. And we just want to get rid of the, of the paper and put it on the microfiche.
Seeing, seeing no lights, we can move on to 7.14.
So, like.
We're getting slow.
When, like, when I used to go in college and you'd slide and look at things, is that microfiche, and there's some?
I might have misspoken, I hope, microfiche, is it digital?
Yeah, they're, we're putting essentially older records on, into an electronic copy, and some of the records are, we're essentially imaging all of them and putting them into an electronic format.
So, somebody's gonna?
Yeah.
All right, and feed it in and scan it?
Right.
Okay.
Can you let him come watch?
If he'd like.
Okay.
Welcome in.
And then, when we're done, those historical records, we're gonna destroy?
That I don't know, right off the top of my head, what we're gonna do with the records once they're done, but we do want to make sure that especially with old documents that are starting to wear out physically, that we, we have an electronic record of them, but I don't know that we decided to dispose of those records necessarily, we just want to make sure that they're archived accurately.
So, I think that there were just, we just wanted to make sure from a legal standpoint, there were no issues with keeping, and I think Rodney's let us know that as long as we actually have them, we'll be fine electronically, so we don't want to have that room full of documents anymore.
Next, we'll move to 7.14 USDA commodity processed items and commercial equivalents for the 2017-18 school year.
Thank you, board members, that's exactly what it's for, about $13.3 million in processed items and commercial equivalents for next school year.
Moving on to 7.15, complete serving lines for various school cafeterias.
That's correct, we're just redoing some of the serving lines in some of the schools, and as the board knows, we bring a number of these every year to get done over the summer.
So, moving on to 7.16, roofing project for Sheffield Shrine Elementary School.
That's correct, I believe this is going to the Facilities Committee, $446,000.
Next, item 717, chiller purchase only for White Station Elementary School.
That's correct, $124,000 for chiller at White Station Elementary.
Subject, I'm sorry, item 718, E&amp;A hive manager support.
Mr. Williams.
Yes, this, these are, I don't know if you noticed in the room here, but we have the new access points in place here, the arrow hives, and as you know, we started the wireless access, improving our wireless in every school, every building. We are approaching the end of year one, so we have to, we get the first year free on support, or it comes with it out of the box, so for subsequent years, there's a licensing fee and a maintenance fee, and since it is new technology, and everything is software-driven now, we want to ensure that we have the support in place to make sure we get all the upgrades that are pushed out, and that if we have any maintenance problems with any of them, will be covered under this contract.
Seeing no lights, we'll move to 719, easement agreement at Germantown High School, Chisholm Drive.
Thank you, board members, I think we were, this one before the Facilities Committee, I think there's a business owner with a restaurant that's seeking an easement over by Germantown High School.
Board Member Orgul.
So, Ms. Noble, I reviewed the agreement, I said something to our general counselor who had to leave for his brother's medical emergency, and I hope his brother's okay. The two things I noticed in there, the, that, I know it's, you can terminate it, but I'd like to see it updated, if everyone else agrees, to say that it's not assignable without our consent, and, because the gentleman that came down and spoke, right there, I think, as long as he owns a restaurant, we, we made a deal with him, but I don't think that if something else goes in there, that we necessarily want to make a deal with that person, so I just want it spelled out that it's, it's, the agreement's not assignable without the consent of Shelby County School Board, and also think that standard in any easement lease, anything else, I thought about this when I read it, that probably after five years, there should be some kind of increase, so I was gonna suggest that every five years from the start date, that there's a 15% increase. So, 200, then 230, because inflation, food will go up, other things too, so I think, and we're gonna have to maintain the road that'll have some increased traffic on it from the restaurant, so I wanted to make those two suggestions, see if we can come back next week with that, and if nobody else has the objection to it, or, I just saw that in the lease. It's set at $200? A 15% over the previous five years, is what I was gonna say, so it'd be 15%, so it'd just be a percentage. So, it'd go from 200 to 230, and then 230 to, comes out another $39.
Board Member Jones.
I guess my concern was, should we lock ourselves into 15% automatically, or should we have a review at the appropriate five-year intervals of what that increase might need to be, or if we should have one?
Bless.
Board, Board Member Orgul.
No, I, I mean, it seems pretty standard, I mean, if you're doing a commercial lease escalator, I mean, you could do it annually, but it's gonna be a thing to keep up with, and, I mean, I don't care, I just, I was just trying to account for some inflation, which runs somewhere between 2% and 3%.
I agree with that, I just, I don't know if 15% is gonna be on the high or the low side, or, maybe it's the average, I don't, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I think it's standard, I mean, it's, you could put CPI in there, but then you gotta go calculate it, and generally, it's been running 2%, 2.5%, 3% the last 10, 15 years, if you average it, the, the government gives you a calculation on it, so, I was just putting something in there, just keeping my eye on it.
So, so I would just ask the administration, you, if you make these adjustments, we'll see it before we vote on it, right?
Absolutely.
So, we'll be able to have discussion about it at that point?
We can.
Moving on to 720, resolution amending the Shelby County Board of Education's fiscal year 2016-17 budget, May 2007 amendment.
Mr. Johnson, and I think, board members, that you guys in the Facilities Committee talked about the additional projects that we'd like to request, and just so the board knows, so, we had worked with the Shelby County Commission's administr, the Shelby County Administration around the $54 million for the two new schools and for some more deferred maintenance. The way that the resolution read, that the Administration put together, it had about $18 million of that money coming to us now, and it broke it up over three years, which actually puts us at a disadvantage, so what we'd like to do is go in and ask specifically for these projects, since the County Commission has already approved the $18 million for this year, and then re-ask for the $54 million, so that we can move forward the projects that the board has already approved, and that the County Commission has already set it fund. With that, Mr. Johnson.
So, I have three items, and I'll talk about the first, which is, this is our last budget amendment for FY 16-17 school year. Our, we are, we do this every year in terms of rightsizing our budget in preparation for our audit, that starts July 1. Partly, what you will see here is, our budget is being reduced from $1.37 billion to $1.33 billion, $33 billion. Our general fund, which is our biggest fund, we're doing a realignment of the general fund budget to make sure that they're consistent with the state functions. There's no increase or decrease in terms of the general fund. In terms of the, the capital project improvement fund, there's a decrease of about 20.1. There are a few things that are happening in terms of the capital budget and why that's the case. The first is just assuring that the projects that we did not complete this year, we carry forward those funds for, for next year, and we're aligning our FY 17 budget with our 18. Second, there, the ERP, there was about $4.5 million for ERP, the Shelby County has written that off this, this year. And the third, as well, relates to emergency projects that, that are typically budgeted in terms of our fund balance as well, and that declined about $3 million related to the capital fund. The special revenue fund as well, there's a net decline of about $1.7 million of that. The primary reason behind that decline is really a reduction in the TLE grant that we have, but there are also a reduction in the Teacher Town and the Verizon grant. Those funds don't go away, we still have access to those funds for next year. Again, we're just rightsizing the budget to fit what we are projected to spend. And then, the federal program, again, this is a realignment with the state functions as well, with the state functions as well, and also, what we wanted to do is also include Read to Be Ready, there's about $204 million for that. Five schools are gonna participate, Cummings, Roselle, Willow Oaks, Power Center, and Grandview Wood Academy of Innovation. And then, the last fund that we have is our Internal Service Fund, and there's a decline of about $740,000 in expenditure, and that's really related to less-than-expected special ed service that have been provided to AST, and that's pretty much linked to the number of students that they've had as well. So, this is, you know, the overview in terms of the last amendment for, for this budget for FY 16 and 17.
Just want to note, board members, along those lines, just want to thank International Paper has given us a $100,000 donation for the Summer Learning Academy, and then we did get a $1.5 million grant from the state for the Read to Be Ready program.
So, next, we'll move on to 7.21, and that is the fiscal year 2017-18 budget.
Thank you, board members. We are presenting our final recommendation around the budget. I do want to note, though, I think just a couple days ago, we got our final BEP numbers from the state, and they were actually $2 million higher than we anticipated, which is good, so I think that the board, you know, a couple options, we were just kind of thinking about, and obviously, you know, with board discretion, but, you know, we thought about perhaps doing a 2% bonus for our classified employees that would have to be tied to evaluation. I know there's some discussion about, you know, the infrequency in which employees are evaluated. If we bake that in, and then that will ensure that everybody does their evaluation, you know, as we move more towards performance-based compensation for teachers, we think it's only right that we take the same approach with our classified personnel, so that was one of the items that we, we thought it may be worth discussing. But again, at this point, you know, any changes or direction the board wants to take, we will incorporate it and be prepared to present it to the county. I think they were, the County Commission, I think, probably wants us to present somewhere around mid-June, we're just trying to figure out the exact date.
Board Member Avent.
What's the difference?
Two million.
Two million dollars.
Board Member Love.
Superintendent, was that increase based on, I can't, was that increase based on the amount of students that we received more, I mean, did we receive an increase of students?
So, that, that number is, and that, that number is constantly changing, so we have one, that was the second to last estimate, we have one more month within June, and that estimate changes as ASD enrollment changes as well, so, you know, even the news this week could impact that number.
And Superintendent, I'll wait. Superintendent, something that I would like to see, as it relates to the budget, I know that we have a very high number of children who are truant. What is our plan around making sure that we decrease that number? And I know that you stated there, $2 million extra, so, I mean, whatever the will of the board is, but I do think that we need to have an aggressive plan for how we get the truancy level down in our school.
I think, Ms. Love, that we included some investments around truancy in the proposed investments, but certainly, if the will of the board is to do more, we certainly, we know that's a really a, a big issue, and I think what you know, Ms. Love, we know is that, you know, we gotta figure out a way to motivate folks in the home, because, I mean, we've done so many partnerships with so many people, we've called it out, we've talked about it, but there still are a large number of parents who, just for whatever reason, don't make their kids come to school.
Okay, so I think this is when we start putting our hand on the parents, you know, touching them, telling them, this is what, not hitting them, but when I say put our hands on the parents, we have children who are not coming to school, and, but we've never seen the parent, so putting our hand on the parent and finding out what the issue is, and if we have people who are partnering with us, and they're not meeting the needs that we need, that we have, why are we continuing this partnership? So, I mean, before you even, so before you talk about investing more, I guess I would like to see what the plan is first, because, you know, we may not need any more investment in it, but I would like to see what it is first, and how are we gonna actually find out what the issue is, as to why our children are not coming to school, instead of just assuming.
Agreed.
So, so I would just add that, you know, next week, we'll be voting on the budget, so those items that have just been mentioned today that have not been in the budget, if you could explain, you could have a presentation or, you know, for us, or send us some information before, to, you know, next week, where that money's gonna be spent, because right now, we've kind of sorta talked about it, you know, the $2 million for, for raises. It might be helpful if board members, can I, can we just kind of take a straw vote to see if they agree to that, if you've been putting in there, or should we wait till next? It's a work session.
You can certainly do it now.
Okay, it's a work session, Billy, we can do it now. So, I'd just ask if you want to approve that $2 million, that, that we just take a straw vote to give the Superintendent, you know, an indication if he wants to put that in the budget for us next week to approve. So, Board Member Cornell.
Would the motion be to add that to the agenda for next week? Would we, I mean, I guess I'm asking the parliamentarian, would, would the motion be to add that to the agenda, so then it would be considered, and that would be sort of a straw vote, or would the chair be able to make a different motion?
Under ROR, straw votes are not allowed. They're only real votes in business meetings. In work session, this is a different kind of animal entirely.
Okay, let's just do it this way, then, if the board's okay with this, y'all just let the Superintendent know if you want to see that added in the budget, okay? I mean, the two, could you just send us that information, so they can answer, have their questions answered, you know, who it's gonna be, and how much, and that kind of thing?
Yes, I'm happy to do that, I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to do that.
Board member, are you ready?
This is just a clarifying question. Are you asking us to, would we be making a motion to approve the two million pending discussion about where the board would want that? Or are you saying that if we add this two million, then we are making a decision about how those funds will be expended?
So what the superintendent said was one idea was to put that two million into raises for classified personnel. Is that correct?
Bonuses.
Bonuses, I mean, yeah, bonuses. So if we don't tell them anything, it's currently not in the budget documents that we've received. So it would need to be added, and rather just being stuck in there, I think, you know, we ought to be aware of where it's going and who it's going to affect.
I agree, but I think having some discussion as a board about that, rather than us just saying that's where we're going, I think we would want to have discuss some options.
Well, there'll be time at the work, at the business meeting, you know, we'll still have, if this is not on the consent agenda, that's where you would have the discussion about it.
I don't know that one week from today is enough time for the board to discuss that. And so my question is, if we are putting it in the budget, even if we are saying that these are designated board funds, could there then be some additional discussion about where that is? Just saying that we are, that's one option. There may be other options that other board members have about where to use some of these discretionary funds.
And I think we're safe, and to that point, I think that, you know, when we got the information, you know, we said we can just, you know, put it back in the fund balance. Or, you know, we hadn't done anything for classified employees in the budget, so that would be an option. But I think at the end of the day, those are just some things we kicked around. So, I mean, if there are other ideas the board, you know, wants us to explore, wants us to do, you know, we certainly are open to.
Board member Cornell.
I guess one thing that's on my mind is that if it's a bonus.
Did you, you already commented on this? I think you made some remarks a minute ago.
I made a parliamentary.
Okay, all right, go ahead. I'm just trying to, no, no, I just wanted to make sure I didn't cut in front of board member Woods. So that's right. Go ahead. No, your light was on first, but I didn't know if it was your second light. Just go ahead.
Okay. I like the idea of giving all the, making sure all the employees have had increased compensation. And, but now, if it's a bonus, like if you give, if we give a thousand dollar bonus ten years in a row, it's my understanding that that doesn't count toward their retirement. But if you give a thousand dollar salary increase, and they retire, and they may get four hundred, four hundred more a year for life. So I think we need to really consider what would be, what we could be doing in terms of salary versus bonuses, especially for those with twenty or more years that might retire.
So I think, Ms. Cornell, just some context, and again, you know, we prepared this at the board's discretion and pleasure. So the reason we came up with that was because we actually gave all of the classified employees a two percent raise in January. And the teacher compensation system, as you know, a big component is going to be based on performance. And there are different kind of bonus opportunities within that, as well as just kind of compensation. So we just thought that, you know, in the spirit of performance-based compensation, it'd be nice if, A, we make sure that all of our employees are evaluated, because that was an issue, which we know this will make sure everybody gets evaluated. And then, B, if they receive a satisfactory evaluation or an outstanding evaluation, they'll have a chance to get up to a two percent. And the reason we said the bonus is because that's not reoccurring. And we know that, you know, while things are in a good fiscal place right now, five years from now, who knows? And then once you commit to that salary, it becomes reoccurring. But again, we were just kind of trying to start the discussion.
Board member Woods.
So Superintendent, I know this is not a meeting in which we get to vote, but I do think that, short of any objection from any board members, you can make the assumption that, you know, coming to the meeting with the revised budget would be a smart suggestion. Obviously, if we have two million dollars, instead of putting that into fund balance when we know the outcry we've heard from particularly employees, your eleven-month, your ten-month employees that, quite frankly, aren't going to be working at all this summer, let's face it. So if we have an opportunity to, you know, to either, you know, give them a bonus or increase compensation, I think that's helpful for morale. So we count on you all to bring recommendations to us. I know, you know, I'm sure Lynn then just text you five minutes ago and say, what do you think about this? So I'm sure there's been a lot of robust conversation with you and your staff about what's the right thing to do. So I obviously am in support of bringing that increased amount to reward our employees now. And then I think the board will get to debate that next week, if that's the right approach or not. And again, short of any objection, I think, Superintendent, you get to decide if that's the right thing to do.
Board member Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this was an idea that I had discussed with you previously, and even announced it in the meeting. And so there's also another idea that I won't put out there yet, that I would like for you to look at in terms of showing employees how we appreciate them. So I agree with, I hope that it's a positive recommendation for that.
So I think you have sort of a mixed signal. So I think we need, you know, I think the remark was if there was no objection, and I believe, I think we have a couple of people that object, so however you want to present it and try to convince them, that, you know, I'll leave that up to you.
So I guess one thing I'd ask the board members to do is if, you know, still if there are other ideas, if you just send them to me, and then we'll see if we can work those in there too. So what we'll do is, you know, we'll just bring kind of the final, final, and put the understanding that the board can amend as the season's fit, and then we can finalize and get to the county commission.
And I would just add one thing, and let the superintendent or Chief Johnson correct me to maybe make board members feel a little more at ease about having to make a decision right away. If it does go into fund balance, I know, I think there was some conversation, a contemplation of an assignment of that fund balance, which would not have to go through budget approval. So that would give us more time. That didn't have to be time with the budget. We'd just say, here are the things in the fund balance, and we could spend it however. So that might sound like something that solves, you know, a time for board members to have time to look at it, and certainly not keep us from being able to do it at a later date where everybody's comfortable with it. But again, we can, you know, get some votes tomorrow, I mean, next week, if that's something somebody wants to push, so. And board member Love.
Lynn, I have a question about the budget. So our partners that we have who provide services in our schools, could you provide me with a breakdown of the ones who provide services that, I guess, we reimburse them or we pay them for the services they provide in our schools? And I just need a list of those. And then where are they included in the budget? Or is that included in the budget, in the school's budget?
Yeah. So absolutely, we can. Most of those partners are likely included in the special revenue fund and the federal fund. But what we'll do is look across all of our funds, including the general fund, and we can, we can do that pretty easily for you.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no more lights, we'll move on to Resolution seven point two two, to approve the capital request.
Thank you, board members. I believe this is, goes to what we talked about in the facilities committee around White Station, White Haven, Central, Grahamwood, Delano, and there's some other, I can't think of them, just Richland, Kingsbury, yeah. If you can read us out, Mr. Johnson, I probably shouldn't have tried to do it for him.
Yes, so this request gets to, what Superintendent Hobson mentioned earlier, that there is about eighteen point four million dollars. And along with that, our additional request of fifty, fifty-four million as well. And of the eighteen point four million dollars, those projects would be Central High, West White Haven, White Station, Kingsbury, Overton, Ridgeway, Richland, Grahamwood, and Delano as well. And they have a combination between capital improvement, roof repairs, mechanical, and classroom additions. And then of the fifty, of the additional fifty-four million, that would include two new schools, LC, Goodlett. It would also include Henley, which would be an ASD school, East, Idlewild, Jackson, Ridgeway, Kingsbury, Rose, Mount Pisgah, River View, Ridgeway, Newberry, Kingsbury, Cape Ponds, Delano, Maxine Smith, Sherwood Middle, both a mechanical and ADA, and then Hamilton High School as well. And our request is to have the board approve this list of projects to present to the county commission.
Board member Orgul.
Now, I wanted to thank staff, and for recognizing the needs in these schools and the superintendent. I think this, he listened to a lot of the board members on improvements that needed to be done. And so, but to remind everybody, we have, because we have a five-year plan that we're a year or two into, that we presented to the county commission with four hundred and fifty million dollars worth of improvements. And that's just to keep pace. So every year, it gets added to. So if we don't spend that amount, so I think we should be spending about ninety million dollars in deferred maintenance. And we're not quite spending that amount on deferred maintenance or near it. So we get further and further behind our buildings. I wish I had the list here. I used to have it under here. I think one hundred and forty of our buildings are forty years or more old. I mean, we've got five of them that I think are ninety years old. So there's a lot of deferred maintenance, and we've got a lot of needs in all the buildings we own, even some of them that are temporarily not occupied. So I just wanted to remind the board that, and that we have a priority listing, and there's no, this is an exceptional list because we want to try to attract more students. So it actually can, it's places that are successful that can bring us more revenue and more students and more chance for success. And it's aside from our four hundred and fifty million dollars of capital needs list, this is to bring more quality seats to our district. And, but I think it's great that we're going to ask the county commission to help fund our capital improvements and our deferred maintenance. And it'll benefit the municipal districts as well if we get those dollars, because they have older schools too. And it'll benefit those districts as well if the county commission goes forth and funds these. But I strongly recommend this list of eighteen million dollars, and I think it'll do some great things for our students.
With our 2025 plan and creating more quality seats for students. And with that, seeing no more lights, we're done with that section, and we'll move on to eight point one, board meeting calendar.
Board members, this is just a draft calendar of the meeting schedules for next year.
So I just remind you to, let's vote on, you know, read this and make sure, you know, cross-reference it, because next week, it'll become final. Next, we go to eight point two, proposed policies, and this will be the first reading. And I would, Superintendent, who are you on?
Yeah, both of these, constituent services, there's some revisions. Really excited about the theory of action for change policy. Ms. McKenney's done some great work in consultation with Dr. Griffin, just so the board knows. So Dr. Griffin and her academic team really spent about three days off-site, really, really drilling into the theory of action and what needs to happen to make it actually actionable. We know the board has asked for a written academic plan. We're going to be presenting a written academic plan to the board before school starts. Also, we're going to be asking for another academic workshop in June, so we can really dig in with the board around some of our findings and the way we're thinking about the theory and all this. So just very excited about their work, and we think we're going to be able to make some significant improvements in our student outcomes here in the very near future. So with that, I'll ask Ms. McKenney to really jog through the theory of action policy, because I know board members have seen it, we've talked about it a lot.
Thank you, Superintendent, Chair Caldwell, and board members. I have two policies, so I'll briefly go over the first one, which is constituent services. That's zero zero two five. And that simply adds language ensuring that employee's rights to address board members in accordance with the federal and state law, as well as board policies, is not denied by the provisions of this particular policy. Also, it provides clarifying language pertaining to board members' responsibility for developing board policy and for taking appropriate action and appropriate steps consistent with the policy when addressing constituent concerns. So those are the two main revisions to that policy. So quickly, I will jog through this for the superintendent's request. Just to give you a little background, again, as Superintendent Hobson indicated, you all spent two board retreat periods, I'm not sure if it was two days, or it was a period of four days, I'm not quite sure. But you worked with the superintendent cabinet and Dr. Griffin in coming up with your theory of action for change, which you all determined would be aligned instructional and managed performance empowerment systems. So what is a theory of action? I think this is important for the public, the community, and also our staff and parents and students to understand what the board is engaging in as the board attempts to, and the superintendent and staff want to transform this district into the high-performing district that it will be and can be. So essentially, in the context of school boards, the theory of action is a coordinated method for delivering this high-quality instruction. It's a coherent set of strategies that ensures that we maximize academic rigor and student learning at all levels by shaping goals, policies, strategic planning, and budgets. Why do we need it? We need it because we need to accomplish the board's beliefs in and commitments to creating a high-performing district. How do we create a high-performing district? Through development and implementation of a theory of action. In creating that theory of action, there's a three-step process. You have to determine what do we believe in, what does SES look like, and what does SES want to look like? And then the final step is how do we get there and what needs to change? So the board, during their retreat this year, adopted, developed and adopted its SES core beliefs and commitments. So this is about what the board believes this district can and will be. So it'll be a high global, global academic standard, so all students will be able to achieve those. All students will require quality resources and supports in order to achieve those high levels of success. We also believe that effective teachers and school leaders are essential to creating high student achievement. We believe that strong public support and community partnerships are essential for all students to excel, and we believe that our school system can be high-performing, accountable, and a transparent organization. What are the commitments in reaching those beliefs? This board and this administration commits to preparing all students to achieve at high global academic standards, closing the achievement gap, creating and sustaining a culture of high expectations for all students, commit to equitable distribution of quality resources and support to all students, provide a safe and nurturing school environment, recruiting, hiring, training, and retaining, and supporting effective teachers and school leaders, and being accountable for successfully implementing rigorous standards. Also, meaningfully engaging families in the education of their children, working collaboratively with all community stakeholders, and being a high-performing, accountable, and transparent organization, and being good stewards of public resources and operating in efficient and effective manner. What do we look like now? So currently, we have a high child poverty rate in the we have a high child poverty rate in Memphis Shelby County, 43% for your child, for your school-aged children. We have poor health indicators of chronic conditions, approximately a third of our kids that were surveyed. We have a student mobility rate issue with 13.7% kids moving two or more times in a school year. We have a graduation rate which has increased, but it's increasing at a slow pace. And that's something that the district wants to increase. We have literacy skills that, 32.2% for third-grade reading proficiency rate. English learners' population has increased over the past three years from 6.4% to 7.3%. And we have an attendance rate of about 94%. We have chronic absenteeism, 15.6%. And chronically low-performing schools, about a third of all of our schools are at the bottom 10%. What do we want to look like? The board also adopted its vision statement. And the board has determined that the district will be the premier school district attracting a diverse student population and effective teachers, leaders, and staff, all committed to excellence. How do we get there? Board determined with the input and collaboration of the superintendent and executive leadership and Dr. Griffin, that development of an aligned instructional system transitioning into a managed performance empowerment as schools become high-performing. This looks like we have managed instruction and as schools through their student performance, as they become higher and higher performing schools, they'll earn autonomy. And that earned autonomy can be at differentiated levels of autonomy and always committed to continuous improvement. What needs to change? We need to change our system, system capacity, degree of control within the systems, and responsibilities. Aligned instructional system is a comprehensive and coherent instructional management system. Essentially, it begins with content standards, performance standards, assessments, and consequences, which are provided by the state accountability system. Building on this foundation, there are two primary objectives with aligned instructional system. That's to align your curriculum and materials, instructional strategies, assessment of data, and professional development around that curriculum. Then is to also ensure that all students have access to rigorous academic progress in every school. Then there's management performance empowerment, which schools can transition to through earned autonomy. That builds on this foundation of an aligned instructional management system. And the primary objective of that is you still have continued aligned curriculum and materials, assessment of data, and professional development around the curriculum. But there's an earned freedom and flexibility to principals in schools and teachers only after a rigorous measurement and assessment of individual school performance, using both the district's accountability system and also the state's to ensure accountability and continuous improvement. And of course, to ensure that all students have access to rigorous academic programs in every school. Systems capacity. In order to do this, the board and the superintendent have to commit to increasing the likelihood of systemic improvement. That means that all the systems must be initially aligned to the comprehensive aligned instructional system, which includes accountability and planning, human resources, budget and operations, specialized student supports, technology, and governance. As the district transforms into the management performance empowerment system, the board and superintendent recognize the need to ensure that all necessary district systems are continuously aligned and appropriately funded. So to give you a little idea of the degrees of control for those, for schools and school leaders and teachers that are wanting clear indication of what this means. For aligned instructional system, everything is tight. Instructional management, school operations management, school resource management, goals and performance measures, accountability measures. And again, this is because we're looking at the local context of what we are, where we currently are, and what we need to do in order to transition into managed performance empowerment, which again, you, instructional management, as you earn autonomy through increasing your student performance data. Instructional management will vary by school. School operations management will loosen again based on differentiated levels of autonomy. The same will happen with school resource management. However, goals and performance measurements and accountability measures, those are state-driven and they will remain tight. Creating that theory of action responsibility. So you have, the board and the superintendent have very clear responsibilities. The superintendent is responsible for designing and managing that system, which includes bringing forward policy recommendations and budget proposals that will help to perpetuate that system. And reporting on the theory of action status and providing assessment and reports semi-analogous. The board is responsible for revising the theory of action based on student academic progress as reported by the superintendent and ensuring that the development and support of a communication plan so that you can educate and enlist the workforce, parents, community leaders, and the community at large on the theory of action. And essentially, finally, the board's commitment to continuous improvement, support and monitor the framework to drive forward and align goals, strategic plans, policies, budgets, and administrative actions, revise the theory of action based on research and experience, and use best efforts to educate the SES community, public, and new board members to this vision. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no lights. You did a great job explaining. So, thank you. I think the training sessions helped too. And I would like to also acknowledge Dr. Mike Cashley, the CEO of Council Great City Schools, who helped us with that, and Dr. Kathy Minsberg with CRSS. Coming to the last item, 8.3, superintendent contract extension. And I see the responsible department is, I guess we'll go to the evaluation committee to begin the hearing. Do you have any comments?
We had a terrific hearing. It was great. He's loved. I think it was a good process, though, that we went through. We did get plenty of public input, most of it positive. I think the superintendent probably took away some concerns. And I think he's going to address them. And I just think, hope that we move this process forward.
Seeing no lights. Okay. Board Member Cornell.
In your orange folder, I copied the, since we're on the resolution and we haven't really looked at the contract, I copied a superintendent's contract handout from the Tennessee School Boards Association. So if anybody wants this as a reference to look and see what's usually put in contracts, I thought this is our school board association. It'd just be something to hand out for anybody who wants to use it. That's all. Thank you. Didn't y'all get that in the yellow folder? Ayesha?
I got mine.
Oh, okay.
I believe Board Member Love, Dr. Schultz took hers.
Mr. Chairman, we get reimbursed to go to a lot of these meetings and whatnot. So I thought it would be good if some, something from one of our meetings I could, we would use just to look at if we wanted to.
Okay. And since we're talking about orange folders, Board Manager Ayesha Goins has asked that we return these orange folders. I think she texted you accordingly. And I'll have Board Member Avant, want to speak?
I just wanted to thank Mr. McCormick for leading us through the process. Appreciate all of our board members who gave us input on how the process could be more inclusive of all community members, stakeholders who have a vested interest in our district being successful. So I do appreciate his leadership in leading this process.
Board Member Woods.
Yes, sir. So Superintendent, I didn't run out just because I was, I thought we were voting on this, so I had to leave for a second. But obviously, I look forward to next week. I'm sure there'll be more comments and people coming out to speak about this particular issue. But, you know, what I said long ago was, you know, Shelby County schools, we're in a unique position, right? I think it's important that we give the public an opportunity to weigh in on these decisions. But as we look around, you know, at our other friends who are in the space, it's not often that we're subjected to such a high level of scrutiny. But yet, I think we continue to step up to the plate and continue to prove that we're moving in the right direction. So I think we'll reserve further comments for next week. But I think this is a, you know, this opportunity to put this before the board to, this week is an opportunity to say that we believe we've got a good team. We believe we're heading in the right direction. So thank you.
Seeing no more lights, we are adjourned.
And when you start to worry and ask yourself, am I good enough? Can I compete? I want you to think about all of those long days at Kingsbury High School. I want you to think